We are back on the record, and I will need a motion to end executive session.
I make a motion we end executive session.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. And back in our regular Pickle City Commission meeting, next on the agenda is the consent agenda.
So we have the approval of the minutes from the June 15, 2021, regular Pickle City Commission meeting, approval of the minutes from the July 8, 2021 Pickle City Commission Executive Session.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the new business, first is ordinance number 0-1-21.
This is the first reading. It's an emergency ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances for the City of Pickla.
And this will be an emergency ordinance, and so we'll need a motion making it an emergency.
I make a motion that we waive the three reading rule. I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor waiving the three reading rule and making this an emergency reading, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Who's going to take care of that, sir? Mister city manager? Who's going to take care of this?
I'm sorry.
That's all right. I saw you looking at your paperwork on this ordinance, enacting and adopting the supplement to the code.
This is, I'll address this. This is an ordinance, every year that comes through, the American Legal Publishing Corporation is who keeps track of our ordinances, and they update the ordinances for us and create the book for the City of Pickla, and this just permits that. They've updated it and then puts in the current supplemental for ordinance that have been adopted in the city.
All right. Any questions from the commission?
No.
Nope? Any questions from citizens? I will take a motion then.
I make a motion we approve ordinance number O-1-21.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of adopting the ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Next is ordinance number 0-2-21.
This is the first reading. It's an ordinance repealing Schedule A of Chapter 33 of the Pickla Code and adopting a new Schedule A of Chapter 33 of the Pickla Code relating to wages of certain municipal employees. Kathryn Bogan, Human Resources Director, will present the staff report.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you. Schedule A, as you know, covers the salaries for full-time, non-union represented employees. There are six steps in each classification, and tonight, the wages for certain classifications will be adjusted in an effort to support organizational efficiencies and operations. You have the list before you.
Yes. Any questions from commissioners in reference to the changes? Any questions from citizens in reference to this ordinance? None? I will then ask for a motion then.
That's our first reading.
First reading. That's right. Okay. We'll leave that at the first reading. Move on to resolution number R-56-21.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a joint use agreement with Bowling Green State University for the expansion of the Pickla Public Safety Regional Training Center. Amy Havener will present the staff report, as well as the following two after this one.
Thank you. So this resolution would allow for the city to enter into an agreement with Bowling Green State University. This will provide us with funding to be able to make improvements to the regional safety center, which is out at the old water treatment plant. We submitted a project to the Dayton Development Coalition a few years ago, which would be the construction of a burn building and some concrete work out at the public safety site, and Senator Huffman actually reached out to the Dayton Development Coalition to pull that project from the list, to add it into the funding with Senate Bill 10 that just went through this year. So this is, Bowling Green would be the one that they selected to manage the grant funding, so this would be with us and Bowling Green. We do have a great history with the Bowling Green State Fire School. We have Carrie Fisher Fritz here with Bowling Green tonight if you have any questions, but we've had a great relationship these past few years working with them, and we know this is just another aspect to continue that great relationship forward.
Okay. Any questions from commissioners?
I will say that I know this has been, there have been quite a few years we've been working on this. This is something we've been excited about for a long time, and great use of some facilities too as well, so I think it's wonderful for our city.
I like the repurposing of the facilities and the collaboration with the college. I think it's wonderful. I highly encourage it. Any comments from citizens about this? No? I will entertain a motion then.
I make a motion we approve resolution number R-56-21.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is resolution number R-57-21.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs, and to execute contracts as required for the Lincoln Street reconstruction project.
So this project would allow for us to submit an application to the Ohio Public Works Commission for funding, up to $400,000 for a project on Lincoln Street, which, if any of you live on Lincoln or go down it, you know that the road, the base is failing. So there's been some bird baths that developed through there, and Brian's crew just went out recently and did some pothole repairs. But there's also a 3/4 inch to a 1-inch water line that varies going down Lincoln Street, so that's basically what we use for a private residential service, not a main, so we want to get that upgraded with an 8-inch main. So this would be mainly a reconstruction project with some additional water line work on both the north and south, north and south ends of Lincoln. Again, this would allow for $400,000 of the approximately $800,000 construction cost to be paid for by a grant.
Kind of like that. Any questions from the commission?
Let's just submit the application for the grant, correct?
Correct. This would just be to get us in their cycle. We have not received word if we will get the funding yet, but this is one of the steps we have to have, is a legislative body approving the submission.
Aye.
Amy, the budget is $802,000.
Correct.
The grant is $400,000, so it would be, something would have to come out of our budget.
Correct. The remainder would come out of the street fund, as well as the water department funds.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions from citizens? No? Okay. I will entertain a motion then.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt resolution R-57-21.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Next on the agenda is resolution number R-58-21.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with TransMap Corporation for the GIS data collection and software creation services for the City of Pickla.
So this legislation would allow for the city to proceed with our GIS implementation. There are some departments, I know the Underground Utilities Department, and I believe Pickle Power currently utilize GIS for their work. This would allow the rest of the city to bring our assets online, to have all the data available to not only the city employees, but to the public. So what we'll be doing is collecting data, traffic signal information, sign types, information on our sidewalks, curves, our lane miles, our center lane miles for roadways, for alleys, and also picking up pavement markings. So we'll basically have unlimited data at our fingertips that we then in turn can create maps, put information out on the web to the public, and I know our new website, eventually, we'll be able to incorporate all this as well. So when the public calls in and asks for questions now, in the future, they'll be able to find all that data on our website themselves, so.
Good.
So this will allow for TransMap to complete our data collection. We do have a representative here from TransMap tonight, Craig Shorling. If you have any specific questions, he'll be glad to answer those.
You know, I do remember when we were interviewing city managers, this is something that you spoke about in the interview. Yeah, and so it's wonderful that we're having it now here. I mean, what we can use this for here in the city.
Thank you. And one of the most important elements is that this creates an inventory of all of our assets, and allows us to also understand the condition of those assets and build programs and speak to the budget, you know, the budget and how much it's going to cost to maintain those assets. And I can tell you that without having that information, we were led blindly. So we'll have a clear understanding of what we own, what condition it's in, and have a program laid out that'll be long-term to address those issues, whether it's pavement signs, you know, all the way down to eventually rolling out an opportunity for the residents to submit any complaints or anything they see online, and it will become a work order automatically and be taken care of.
It creates transparency so that citizens can see what it is that we're doing, look at problem areas, et cetera.
And to your point, Mayor, it's really the authoritative data of record, so when you think about a parcel or a street address or anything like that, anything that's tied to it, be it a permit, some code compliance issue, a service call request, whether it's a utility or public works issue, all that would be accessible online, and so we're looking at three to five years out having that stood up.
Great.
All right.
So some of this, would that provide that data real time? So like if there's an electrical outage, you'd be able to see that from?
It's the basis for that, so the GIS data is the backbone, and then you have other programs. So like a customer information system that emulates where that outage is, if you go to like Dominion or First Energy or Amp Ohio, any of those, they have those systems. It's all predicated on the GIS information.
Is that two-way then, or an option, so then you could?
It is an option, and so when you put a ticket in, it would be the ticket system of whatever asset management platform we would select, and so it becomes a two-way, I guess, two-way communication feature.
That's nice.
It's great for citizens to have the ability to communicate with city government. I like that. Any questions from citizens? I will entertain a motion then.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number R-58-21.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution number R-59-21.
A resolution authorizing a purchase order to Century Equipment, Inc. for the purchase of 36 golf carts for Echo Hills Golf Course. City Manager Oberdorfer is going to present information with regard to this.
Yeah, so currently, the golf carts that we have on contract, the lease, it's a lease option to purchase the golf carts. With the current environment, it's really difficult to get chips, the manufacturing of the chips that go in the golf carts, as well as the rare earth elements for the batteries are very difficult to come by. So instead of extending the lease or getting into a long-term contract at this point to get equipment, we may or may not be able to get, it was best determined that from a financial and operational perspective to go ahead and buy out the existing cart lease, we have the option to use them for two years. They can be sold back, more than likely, and make money on the deal, or we can use the carts for something else at that point.
Any questions from the commission?
So I just want to understand it correctly. We've had these carts, they're on a lease, we have the option to purchase them now.
That's correct.
We could extend the lease if we wanted to.
Well, yeah, and if we extend the lease, we're buying into more time and then maintenance. So, you know, this really gets us to where we need to be. Hopefully, things will be recovered in another year or so, and we can make that determination then.
Any questions from the citizens? I'll entertain a motion then.
I move that we adopt resolution number R-59-21.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is R-, a resolution number R-60-21.
A resolution authorizing a purchase order to Cargill Incorporated for the purchase of road salt for the street department. Brian Brookhart, Public Works Director, will be presenting the next two staff reports.
Thank you. The Public Works Department is requesting approval to purchase road salt for the 2021-2022 snow season from Cargill Incorporated. Road salt is competitively bid through the Southwest Ohio Purchasers for Government for approximately 86 Ohio municipalities, townships, and counties. This year, our price per ton will be $58.32. That's a $10 increase from last year's price. We are requesting, if needed, to purchase up to 2,500 tons of salt at a cost of $145,800.
We used quite a bit last year, didn't we?
We used quite a bit, not as much as you would think. Approximately last year, we used 1,554.81 tons.
In comparison to previous years, is that up or down?
That was up from a couple previous years. We were very fortunate with a couple good winters, back-to-back, and last year was a little rough, but fortunately, with some of the newer technology that we have in some of our newer trucks, that has cut down on what we put down under the roadway, just by how we're able to control what we're putting down out there.
So with the events that we had last year, hopefully, it was an extraordinary winter, but we did kind of fall to the backside on getting some deliveries in because of the demand. Looking at the authorization of this, are we going to anticipate ordering closer to the max amount prior to, that way we're locked in, hopefully, and get that on ground? That way we're not, you know, if we're in an event, we run out of salt, and we don't have to wait three or four days to get it in?
We only have the storage capacity for about 800 tons of salt, so I can't order any more than that at a time. We currently have 600 tons in the salt barn. You can't place that. If, once I place the order, you are put in line, and it's first-come, first-served. You know, as soon as we get down, you, everybody bases it on the weather, you're looking at forecast. I look at every forecast I possibly can, looking ahead, what we may potentially be getting, how much supply we have on hand. Unfortunately, when snow hits, it hits everybody at the same time, and everyone is requesting salt. I mean, everybody's on the phone at the same time. At 8 o'clock, right when they open, we're all calling, we're all sitting on hold on, I mean, sometimes for 40 minutes or longer, until you can talk to somebody and actually get your order placed.
Will we be fully stocked before the coming of the winter season, though?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions from the citizens?
Brian, I have a question.
Yes.
The liquid that is sprayed or put down, we know there is an event coming, that goes down first, and then when, when is it essential for salt to be put down?
It's essential for that to be put down before your first event, when there's no salt on the roadway. Once you get a salt residue built up on the roadway, and it hasn't rained, it's basically doing the same thing that salt brine does. It can give you, you know, a half hour to 45-minute head start before you get your people in. We're lucky, all of our employees live here locally, the response time is quick from when we get in to when we get out on the roadway. So typically, when we put that down, we're looking at putting that on bridges and hills and higher-volume roadways like US 36, County Road 25A.
Good. Thank you.
Yep.
And it says estimated 2,500 tons, but we're not required to purchase all of that, though, correct?
We are never required. Yes, that is correct.
If there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution R-60-21.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is resolution number R-61-21.
A resolution authorizing a purchase order to Leader Machinery Co. for the purchase of a Duraco Dura Patcher for the street department.
Yes, the Public Works Department is requesting approval to purchase a Duraco Dura Patcher from the Leader Machinery Company. The Leader Machinery Company is on the State of Ohio Purchasing Program, which we are a part of. This pothole patcher will help extend the service life of our roadways. We did not budget for this machine this year, but our vendor was gracious enough to contact me to let me know that they submitted paperwork to the state for a $10,000 increase on this machine, which is going to take place in August, which is why we are looking at purchasing this now. We are able to purchase this for a total cost of $69,363 at this time. If we wait till next year, we will definitely be paying $10,000 more than this price right now, and they are also anticipating another cost increase at the end of this year, which would go on top of this $10,000 increase. You know, after reviewing our budget, we do have the funding available to make this purchase this year. The increase in cost, according to the vendor, is due to steel and supply cost increases that they are seeing abroad. This patcher is recognized as the leading pothole patcher in the industry. The Duraco Dura Patcher is recognized by the Strategic Highway Research Program as the most durable and cost-efficient repair method. Attached in this paperwork, it shows a partial, a higher user list of cities, villages, and counties and townships that are currently using this exact machine. For example, City of Troy, City of Sidney, West Melton are just a few examples of local municipalities that have this exact machine and use it. ODOT also owns over 30 of these machines that they use statewide for patching their roadways. So this machine, it is extremely effective. The city manager and I have discussed this, and we both highly recommend making this purchase, if possible.
How old is the one we've got?
We do not have one at this time.
Okay.
Does this align with some of our programs that we've just recently talked about, trying to extend the life of our streets, to be able to basically play catch-up, to really start making effective repairs to all of our roads?
Yes, this machine plays a key role in that. Some of the streets that I looked at having cracked sealed this year, when you look at crack sealing, you look at the overall roadway, and when you get a roadway that has some alligator cracking in it, crack sealing's not effective in all those areas where you really need to take a Dura Patcher through first and take care of all of that, then go through and have the roads cracked sealed. That way, you are sealing everything off on the roadway. You want to keep the water from getting underneath the roadway. Once it gets underneath there, that's when the potholes start to form, and having this piece of equipment will be key to, you know, getting rid of a lot of those pothole issues and extending the life cycle of our roadways. The citizens will see a huge benefit from having this piece of equipment here.
Is the inventory ready on these, or is this something that we're going to put a purchase order out on and then wait four or five months to get into the fleet?
Fortunately, it's not that far out. We will see this within seven to nine weeks.
Oh, great.
Any questions from the citizens? Any other questions from commissioners? I'll entertain a motion then.
Make a motion that we approve resolution number R-61-21.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is resolution number R-62-21.
A resolution for consent to award a contract to Strand Associates, Inc. for design of the Franz Ditch Swale. Sky Shelley Stormwater Manager will present the next two staff reports.
Good evening. The utility department has an agreement before you tonight for the design of the Franz Ditch Swale. Franz Ditch starts just north of the intersection of Sunset and High and flows into Franz Pond. It's been a, it's been an issue that's been on our radar for over a decade. The erosion there is contributing over 180 tons of sediment every year into Franz Pond, which I think you're all aware is part of our drinking water source. That erosion is also threatening private property. Two years ago, we did a pretty extensive engineering study on how to solve this problem and stabilize Franz Ditch. We looked at a number of possible solutions, from moving the stormwater to a different part of the system, to doing upstream detention. The only financially tenable solution we could find, an engineering solution that would work, was to build a swale adjacent to the ditch, and that's what this design is for. So what is being proposed is that our engineer, Strand Associates out of Cincinnati, they are going to design a approximately 500 linear-foot swale on property owned by Pickla Baptist Church on High Street, and this swale will have two connections to Franz Ditch. When that water rises during a storm event, the floodwaters will move into the swale, and then over the course of 72 hours, they either soak into the ground or slowly move back out into the ditch once that storm has passed. Thereby, all that erosive force, all that energy from the stormwater is in the swale and not in the ditch, and that's going to greatly cut down on the erosion. What we're planning here is for that property to remain in ownership of Pickla Baptist Church. However, they have agreed to give the city rights through an easement for construction and for perpetual maintenance of this swale. The design is going to cost $130,000, $50,000 of which is being generously donated to the city by the Middle Great Miami Watershed Alliance. The remainder of the funds are going to come from the stormwater fund. Design of this swale is expected to take about 12 months, and after that, we would start setting money aside and looking for funding for construction. So that's quite a bit down the road.
I do know, having, I know we have some residents here.
I want them to speak.
Yeah, from Franz Pond, and I know that many of us have heard from you all, and I know you have a very active group, trying to work on Franz Pond, especially getting the algae and things like that removed, and it looks like this might help with some of that. Am I correct?
So a lot of the algae problem is driven by how shallow Franz Pond has become, and so if we can cut off the amount of sediment moving into that, then yes, it will help the algae problem.
Because that's been a huge problem, I know. Yeah, thank you.
Any other commissioner have a comment?
I have a question. Is it shallow because of the filling of the? It, is it shallow because of the filling of the sediment, or is it something else?
No, it's the, it's the sediment. So Franz Pond is, you know, it's well over a hundred and twenty years old. Um, we have a, a study, it's quite old now, it was done in two thousand and nine, but Franz and Echo are over fifty percent full of sediment. And them just being a, a man-made water body, that's natural, they're going to fill in. But there are things we can do, like this project, to greatly decrease that.
Okay. So the purpose of the swale is to head off the sediment, understood. But once that swale starts to fill up, I, that, you know, it, it looks like it's, it's an extended cost for the city to go out there and continuously maintain that swale to continuously pull out that sediment out. Is they, am I mistaken in saying that?
Well, the, the, the purpose of the swale is not so much to collect sediment. Um, it's to collect that, that large volume of stormwater that creates all that energy in the ditch, and it's that energy that is creating the erosion and loosening the sediment. So without that, that energy, there isn't going to be sediment eroding from the banks and moving downstream. Now, the swale itself, um, it will need maintenance. Um, that area is going to have to be mowed at least twice a year, so there, there will be a cost there. I don't know what that is right now. Um, you're going to have a small amount of sediment that's gonna build up at that opening, upstream and downstream. I would anticipate probably once every two to three years, we will have to have a piece of machinery out there to remove sediment so that swale continues to perform. And that's something that, that we're gonna, we're gonna have to keep, keep our eye on, because if we don't keep that maintained, you're absolutely right, it's not gonna serve its function.
So will the maintenance of that be built into the survey that, or the project, uh, when they do the, uh, study?
So, yes, the, the design is going to include, um, more detailed information about what the maintenance is going to be and what the maintenance is going to be long-term. Um, we are also going to have the opportunity to discuss with the church and the, the utility department, different landscaping options, some are gonna be more maintenance-heavy than others. And obviously, from our perspective, we would like to do the less intensive maintenance options.
Okay. Citizens, have any questions about that?
Yes, I have a question.
You have to come to the podium, say your name, and where you live.
Good evening, Jeff Lang, ninety-five, eighty-six North State Route sixty-six. Before I get into my comments about, uh, what Mr. Shell was talking on the Franz Ditch Swale, I'd like to compliment all of my eighty hard-working volunteers of PAL, Protecting Our Waterways, a nonprofit that has just finished its eighteenth year of participating in the clean sweep of the Great Miami River last Saturday. These eighty volunteers used thirty-plus canoes and pulled out three thousand, seven hundred and eighty pounds of trash from South Sydney to South Pickwa, sixteen miles of adopted river. A shout-out goes to the Police Department, the Street Department, and the Fire Department for watching our backsides, Brian for getting dump trucks spotted for us, allowing us to use safety cones and stop-and-go signs, slow signs. Also to Cargill, our main sponsor. Thirty-seven eighty, sounds like a huge number, but believe it or not, that's our record low. Our high year back in two thousand and seven was twenty-six thousand, five hundred pounds and a hundred and forty-eight tires. Uh, I can't say enough about my volunteers, I can't say enough about all my sponsors, food, drink, uh, gifts, and, uh, it's just amazing to me when I ask these people who repeatedly come out and bust their chops to do this, how good of a job they do. So, uh, I want to applaud them right now, and I thank the City of Pickwa for, uh, allowing me once again to do this another year.
Now, we thank you, we appreciate you, we do.
Uh, as far as the Franz Ditch Project goes, uh, as Sky alluded to, the waters that are backed up by the Pickwa Hydraulic Canal levee, uh, go all the way back to eighteen seventy-two. Franz, Echo Lake, and Swift Run were actually filled not only with rainwater, but also the Pickwa Hydraulic Canal ran all the way to Lockington. No longer is any of that canal really visible, but Lockington water comes off the Great Miami, was used to fill those reservoirs quickly. Those waters were part of the Pickwa Hydraulic Company, which sold that water to businesses downtown, down Water Street, down the mains, to power the mills with water power before electricity was discovered. Later on, they ran into some financial problems, cause electricity was discovered. So there was a large source of water and not much use for it, and that's when the City of Pickwa bought out the Pickwa Hydraulic Company. They bought out all lock, stock, and barrel, their bridges, their piping, everything. But to, uh, the Pickwa Hydraulic Company's, uh, favor, uh, Pickwa at one time, for seven or eight years in a row, was the only city in the State of Ohio that had a disproportionate higher number of fire hydrants powered by the Pickwa Hydraulic Canal than any other city in Ohio. So hats off to them. But this swale is very important to address, because first of all and foremost, it's silt-ing up Echo Lake, it's silt-ing up Franz Pond, it's silt-ing up Echo, I mean Swift Run Lake. This silt, uh, Sky referred to some of it, uh, the original eighteen seventy-two depth of Franz was fourteen feet. Now it's seven. Echo Lake was almost eighteen, and now it's about seven and a half, eight. Swift Run was twenty-five foot deep at the levee, and now the deepest spot I can find there is twelve. Now, this is silt that's come from the far west end of these reservoirs, and that's the depth at the far east end up against the Hydraulic Canal. Number one and foremost, in my opinion, is the City of Pickwa has been getting their raw water supply shortened, because as the silt comes in, there's not as much water storage there. So back in eighteen seventy-two, you almost had like, uh, ninety days of water supply if you would've just drawn it off the Hydraulic Canal exclusively, not used the river, not used the Ernst Quarry off Pickwa Lockington Road. So you've gone from ninety days back down to about thirty-one or thirty-two days of raw water storage in that reservoir alone, with those three reservoirs, not Hydraulic Canal. Second, very important, is that the silt causes eutrophication, and it causes a depleted oxygen level. So that's when you were talking about hydraulic and weeds in the waters, that a lot of it is caused by the siltation. And then also, there's homeowners here that are gonna speak to you tonight, that their homeowners value, their, their value of their lots have diminished dramatically, because they used to be on a lake, they used to be on Franz Pond. And now where their docks used to be on two and a half, three foot of deep water off the end of their dock, now they're on mud flats. And this city needs to step up and take care of these waters, because it's just not about impounding waters, treating them in your water plant, and then selling them to your customers. This city is responsible for the whole watershed that falls within the city limits of Pickwa. And we really need to start taking an effort to look at what we can do in the watershed to help protect, preserve, and do things that cut down on these kind of natural events that silt these lakes and this reservoir. So I highly recommend and support this initiative to take action and move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yes, sir, come forward.
I'm getting a little old.
Oh, you're not, you're getting better. What's your name?
My name is, uh, Dick Brandewee.
And where do you live?
First of all, I want to thank you for allowing me to be here tonight.
Oh, no, thank you.
I wish I didn't have to follow Jeff, but...
It's tough, tough act to follow.
My wife and I live at the three-ten Ronair Drive.
Okay.
And, uh, we've lived there for forty-four years.
Wow.
Our property is located on the south shore of Francis Pond. Uh, somewhere in the late nineteen nineties, the, the then-city commission was asking citizens of Pickwa to form an action, a citizens' action committee, the CAC. And as a result, the Middle Great Miami Watershed Alliance was formed, and a request for a five-oh-three-C was approved, and we were off and running. In nineteen ninety-five, the stand of woods on the south side of Maplewood was cleared, and five new large homes were built. These homes had large backyards and no grass. In addition, from the north, a fifty-foot wide and eight-foot-deep canal was extended out to the south of Francis Pond, so that the builder could claim that the properties were waterfront properties. In addition to these new homes, the canal and the usual rain, the canal was soon, the canal was soon filled with earth runoff, and the developer is named Tom Taylor, who at that time was living in Covington, Ohio. Since the mid-nineteen ninety-fives, there have been many, many, many meetings and discussions about Francis Pond, and a lot of that information is captured in a binder labeled Francis Pond, and I have that with me. The binder is the work of the Brandewee and Doertie families. We have been, we have had six new city managers and a plethora of new commissioners over the past forty-four years, and we feel obligated to share our information with the people who are now in charge, with the hope that they will, it will give them some background to Francis Pond. As I read the agenda for this meeting, I noticed that item ten is for the approval of the funds for the developing plans for a pond beyond, behind Baptist Church located on High Street. I believe this pond is to retain and/or slow down water flow into Francis Pond. This pond supposedly would replace the Meandering Creek that we originally had before the new development of Marwood. Today, after a heavy rain, we still have our end of Francis Pond flooded with bronze, brown silt. Pictures of the continual flow of the silt shown by ear are in this binder about Francis Pond, so if you all want to have a look at that.
Mm-hmm.
Last week, Bob Doertie and I noticed two gentlemen in our backyards. They were our new city manager, Mr. Ober Dorfer,
Mm-hmm.
and a gentleman from our city water department. I cannot tell you how happy Bob and I were to finally have someone who seemed really interested in our water source, especially Francis Pond. We both told them how happy we were and how the pond looks great at this time. We applauded the use of, of the plant-eating carp and asked that they keep up the good work. In retrospect, I feel we may have misled them to think nothing else needs to be done to Francis Pond, except to keep it exced- exced- sedically pleasing. In this binder, you will find my prediction. If nothing is done at the head of Francis Pond, we will have no water, only silt below our docks. I predicted that would happen in the year two thousand and twenty-one. Two weeks ago, on July sixth, we had a four-inch-deep island of silt just outside our dock. Now I say that my prediction was off by a couple of years today. If we lower the pond water, which can be controlled by the water department, or periods of dry, hot weather, we will have an island in the middle of the pond behind our house. So the clues, in conclusion, it appears to me that to keep Francis Pond a portion of the water available to our city in the future, even if it may be small, we must fix the slow death of Francis Pond. Therefore, on behalf of all the citizens living on Francis Pond, I request that you approve the funds necessary to the design of the Francis Pond Swale behind the Baptist Church on High Street. Resolution number R sixty-two twenty-one. Thank you.
No, thank you, I appreciate you saying that. And the history, and I would like to see the, your book when, when we're done here.
Where are you, who's talking?
Right here, right here.
There you go.
In front of you. Right here.
Right ahead.
Yes, I'd like to see it. Thank you for sharing. And, don't leave without it, okay? All right. Any other comments?
I'm Randy Kirchner, I live at eleven-seventy-seven Chevy Lane. Um, I represent the Middle Great, who's giving you the, the, um, fifty thousand dollar grant. We formed, from the CAC, which Bob and, and Dick and Jeff were part of, we formed a nonprofit so we could help with these projects. This is, one of the things we did is we wrote, um, a nine-point plan, which was approved by Ohio EPA. And this'll be the first of many projects that'll be coming up that we need to address to fix our,
Mm-hmm.
get our water supply back.
Sure.
But it's Francis Pond, you have the same problem, you have the same problem at, uh, Echo Lake, and you also have it at Swift Run, too, with the sediment coming in from the other streams. So this is just the first. How many different steps we have, in that, four, five? Yeah, we have five, we have five different laid-out programs right now that, and that's one of the reasons we formed a nonprofit, is so that we could help, as citizens, find funding for you.
Mm-hmm.
And we had to be a five-oh-one-C, so, so. Um, and to answer the, answer your question about the swale and the nutrient loading, if we designed this swale correctly, there's products available, available that was invented by the University of, uh, Worcester.
Mm-hmm.
That, and I can't remember the compound, but you can incorporate that into the swale, and it actually draws the nutrients out before it gets into the, into the pond.
That would be great.
So that would hopefully reduce some of the need to use the weed harvester.
Sure. I agree. Well, well, thank you for being part of that group and contributing that money towards this, towards the project. Appreciate it, and it's very important.
Yeah, it is.
It's very important. I grew up at the Thousand Block of Boone, so Francis Pond is very near and dear to me. I spent lots of time, uh, climbing up, uh, up the hill there and, and, and checking it out and fishing as a kid. And even as an adult, I'd like, I'd like that to be cleaned up and, uh, usable for water. So, appreciate, appreciate everything you're doing.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor Lee, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Quick on this. Um, cause I know that, obviously, this has been an issue for a long time on Francis, on Francis Pond, and then also, um, the other waterways as well. And a lot of it does stem back, I've heard, from, um, building that happened on the west side of town, and then all of the silt that came down, I mean, you can, you can see that there's, it's higher, and then it comes down lower.
It's nasty.
I know that I've heard people also bring up the water that comes, um, uh, north of Park Avenue. Um, there's a ditch in that area that I believe comes out into Echo Lake, am I correct? And I know that there's issues with that as well. Is that something that in the future, we could look at doing something like this to help that situation?
Well, if, if I understand you correctly, um, there's, that ditch was stabilized, uh, before I was hired, and I've been here for four years.
It was done about five years ago.
Was it, okay.
Was that done about five years ago?
Yeah, right before you came.
And in that time, I have not gotten any more complaints about erosion along that ditch. Um, every time I've been out there, um, it looks stable, I don't see signs of, of erosion. So from my vantage point, that kind of, that source has been cut off.
Okay. So this will be a similar fix as that was for that ditch, cause I know I've heard numerous stories about that ditch. Is it?
Sim- similar.
Similar, yeah.
Similar, not exactly, I mean, this, that one's included, right?
Yeah, where, whereas that, that ditch along, um, that fed into Echo was a, kind of a traditional stream bank stabilization, stabilization with stone and, and that sort of thing. The cost of doing that along Franz was gonna be about two million dollars.
Okay.
Uh, so we're, we're going with this swale, uh, which, construction-wise, is gonna be much cheaper than that.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I just remember people talking about that other one, too, so, okay.
But also, part of our problem with the erosion is not only by that water, but it's also by the invasive plants grown on the bank.
Mm-hmm.
The honeysuckle, the tree to heaven, there's no root structure there. Our banks are slumping into the water just from heavy rains, and over the last three years, uh... Jeff, do you, Jeff, do you recall how, how high our rainfall's been up this year, last couple of years?
Their rainfall's been...
Rainfall this year, according to MCD, is about six and a half inches over from this point last year.
Okay.
Believe it.
And then what you're referring to in the back end of Echo Lake, we just nicknamed that the French Ditch.
That's right, yes.
And that was the water coming off Eagles Nest, and even though there's retention ponds back there, there was a high elevation offset from... ponds back there, there was a high elevation offset from the east side of Sunset where it goes underneath off all those retention ponds, and like a 22-foot drop through private property that cut like a miniature Grand Canyon there, and the landowners up there were furious. So that project was remedied by some very, very large concrete pipes going straight down first and then turning out level with Echo Lake and then slowing the speed of the cutting action of that water. And that's how they remedied that situation. Also, I want to tell for all you new commissioners here, we secured $125,000 grant from Ohio EPA called a SWIFT grant, and that allowed us to change 1,100 lineal feet on what we call Echo Lake Creek, running through the Echo Lake Golf Course, that turned that back into a natural curvature with rocks and stuff to cut down on the cutting action of that creek, which also added to silt at the back end of Echo Lake. And those kind of projects were applied for by CAC and MGM. Like Randy said, this group is very active in getting money secured by grants, you know, on the state or the federal level, to help offset the costs so that Pickwa can take better care of these waters.
So, so thinking about these waterways and these two projects, the one that was taken care of five years ago, and then this one at France Pond, are there any other out there that we need, that we need to be aware of?
Yeah, we, in our, in the nine-point plan, there's five new, there's five projects addressed in that. We have to, we have to have, when we wrote the nine-point plan, we have to have, it was at least three, and then five. We identified five projects that have to be addressed. Francis Pond's number one.
To take care of Francis Pond, to take care of Swift Run, and to take care of Echo Lake.
Francis Pond is just the first.
Right, okay.
And keep in mind, what you're doing here and voting on tonight is a, a majority fix for France Pond.
It's a beginning.
And then what you have in Echo Lake and Swift Run already, and in France, is the silt is there, and that is not going to take care of the silt that's already there.
Right.
So that's going to be something, hopefully, that we can work with later in MGM and CAC and get funding, maybe on a federal level, to get that out.
Yeah, and that was my question, because I know there's more to this process than just this.
But we have, we have to address the water coming in first. We have to take care of everything coming into the lakes before we can address the sedimentation.
Well, and I can understand the residents' frustration. If you have a dock and you've lived there for how many years? It's, I know the Brandeises and the Dohertys have lived there, and I know you, you purchased your house, I think, five, six years ago. Yeah, and I mean, you have a dock and, you know, you're enjoying the water, and then you have a dock and you have nothing but silt and dirt underneath it. So, and like I said, I've, I know I've spoken to many of the homeowners there about this. So glad we're moving towards some type of solution.
And I'm 100% moving towards a resolution here, but I, I still want to go back. You guys brought up a great point. The silt being in the lake is the next step. However, I think removing the silt dredging would be the first step to start restoring the depth back to the lakes and then allow more time for better studies to actually fight this along down the road, because construction is not going to stop in Pickwa. There's going to be continuous movement of sediment down waterways. So if we're losing, if we've lost 50% of our capacity, and this, this is my opinion, if we've lost 50% of that capacity of that lake for ground-drinking water and we're not addressing that, if the city has control of that and we don't remove that sediment, but yet we do a smaller project that is going to extend us for three, four years, maybe, I don't, and this is where I look at the usability of cities' dollars to help maintain what the city took on 200 years ago. Unfortunately, it's a legacy issue. We have a city manager that's now involved coming out there and looking at it. I, you know, I would like to see if this swale is going to provide what we absolutely need to stop, you know, what's the study on the swale? Is there another, is there another community in the state of Ohio that's done this that showed that, okay, we've cut down the percentage of silt moving through, and what that percentage is? Or do we look at like what lakes do, like Indian Lake, St. Mary's, Fort Larmine, and put a dredger out there and open it up first and start getting water levels back up and then address the runoff issues?
Well, one thing I want to mention is that Indian Lake does a really good job with their silt, but they have a five-acre miniature deep hole on the east end of that lake that was put in about 20 years ago with maintenance dollars planned to take care of that silt. So when the river flows in there, that five acre is dipped out every three or four years with an excavator all the way around it, and then that silt is laid back up on the farmer's fields. So it does go back to the field.
Mm-hmm. That I understand.
Yeah, but you're absolutely right. You have a problem that's fluid right now and always in motion on all three of those reservoirs and in your hydraulic canal.
Yeah.
You got to stop the problem first and then look at possibly getting the silt out of there to give you more raw water storage in your system.
And the swale stops the problem. There you go.
It aids.
It aids.
It aids, and it's, we need to address, we need to address.
It's start, it's the start.
It's a start, but you need to, which we've already addressed some of the, we've had, we had grants for some of the homeowners up there to remove some of the honeysuckle and stuff, those who wanted to participate, and we, we got that grant, too. So it's a start, but it's a multifaceted project, and we have, you just have to take one thing at a time.
Yeah, and I'm not going to be one to say that I'm not supportive of it. I'm very supportive of it. It needs to be taken care of. It'll help the whole city and not, you know, just one or two people, and even if it did, we need to, we need to address it. It needs to be addressed.
Even if recreation-wise.
I agree.
A lot of recreation.
That's, that's a city, yes, that's for the city. I agree.
Which, there's other cities around here that can't say that.
That's right.
We're blessed with some beautiful water.
We are. We most certainly are, and I'm full supporter of this, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So, anybody else would like to address? Any other citizens? I will entertain a motion, then.
I make a motion. We approve Resolution Number R-6221.
A second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's get this fixed, begin to get it fixed.
Has everyone seen the binder?
No, pass it down this way, because it's, it is neat seeing Francis Pond at highs and then lows and seeing the, the silt. That, that was shocking. That is shocking, so, sorry. Thank you, Jeff. All right, next on our agenda is Resolution Number R-62, 63-21.
A resolution for consent to award a contract to Outdoor Enterprise for construction of the 2021 storm sewer repair project.
Thank you. This, this contract for Outdoor Enterprise is to address three different major stormwater repairs. In total, we're going to be replacing almost 1,200 linear feet of 48-inch storm pipe, which is some of the largest storm pipe we have here in Pickwa. All three projects are on private property. The first project is at 208 Ford. This is a, a pipe that has been in, in bad repair for over five years. We have had crews inside the pipe trying to patch it, and, and that hasn't solved the issue. The main part of the pipe where the deterioration is, is underneath a private garage, and so we have decided it's in our best interest and the private property owner's best interest if we can move that pipe so it's no longer underneath his garage, and then we're going to abandon that pipe in place by filling it with, with concrete. The second project is at 439 Vine Street. This project was brought to our attention over two years ago when a sinkhole formed right where that pipe ends and, and outlets into a small canal immediately upstream of that. The pipe is in very bad condition, so the problem is not just in, in one spot. Again, this is a pipe that goes underneath a, a private structure, and we're going to realign the, the orientation of this pipe, get it out from underneath the house, abandon it in place. And then the third project is at 309 Covington. This is a small stretch of pipe, only 100 feet. We were inspecting that part of the storm system last year, and the inspection crew found that that stretch of pipe has three large linear cracks in it, at which point, when our design engineers saw that, they highly recommended that this pipe needed to be at the top of our priority list when it comes to replacing. So we bid the project out. Outdoor Enterprise won that bid. The agreement is for $800,000. That includes almost $45,000 worth of contingency, which hopefully we, we won't have to use, but it's, it's there in case something pops up. These are fairly complicated projects, especially the one on, on Ford. Construction is expected to last three months and start sometime in August. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
As I'm reading the resolution, actually, it's just a comment, just so people understand, if somebody were to look at this, there was a low bid of, under, there was another low bid, but it was, there was a wrong price for two of the bid items. I just wanted to make sure the citizens realize that of looking at the actual resolution.
Yes, that, that's a good point. We did receive, we received three bids, and we're, we are awarding to what was the, the middle bid. As you said, the, the low bid, they mistakenly interchanged some, some prices on their bid, and once a bid is submitted, we cannot allow it to be changed. So given that information, they withdrew their bid.
Just wanted to make sure people knew that.
Yes, thank you.
We were originally budgeted at $608,000. Why such the increase for the bid?
There's a couple of reasons for that. We budgeted this at $608,000 when the project was just Ford Street and Vine Street. The, not collapsed, but the, the damaged pipe on S Creek, that wasn't discovered until last October, after budget season was, was completed. So we had that $608,000 for construction, but that does not include S Creek. So that's one reason. The other reason is just the, the increase of, of material cost between last summer and, and now.
What happens if we don't do this right now?
We've got three dam, three severely damaged pipes on private property. I don't really think we have that option.
I just didn't know with, like you said, material costs gone up, are we in a projected form to go back down, or is that going to continue over, projected cost to continue to increase?
I'm not an economist. I can't, I can't begin to answer that question. We've got three pipes that need to be repaired, and we don't want to wait around and see if pipes, if costs are going to go up and down. We've got the money and we want to get this job done.
Fair enough.
Money's coming right out of the stormwater budget, right?
Yes, it is.
It needs to be done, right?
It needs to be done, all three of them.
Any questions from the citizens? Any other questions from the commissioners? I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we adopt Resolution Number R-6321.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the public comment section. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the city commission regarding agenda items, issues, or to provide information. Comments are requested to be limited to five minutes, and specific questions should be addressed to the city manager's office. Anybody would like to come forward?
Good evening. My name's Jerry Christie.
Hi, Jerry. Where do you live?
I live 1825 Britton Drive.
Okay, great.
On the west side of town.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I am a member of the Committee for the Veterans Memorial Park out by the cemetery.
Yes, sir.
And several years ago, the question came up about the banner program that we currently have in Pickwa. And the idea was to develop a program to honor the veterans in the city of Pickwa, people that we want to honor who have served our country, and it would give the opportunity for friends and family to, to do that by displaying banners. Other cities throughout the United States has done that, as well as in, in the state of Ohio. We know many towns along Route 48 that, that has them, all the way from Dayton all the way up to New Bremen, I believe.
Anna just did it, so, yes.
Right. So we wanted to develop this program, but obviously, it was bigger than what we could do. We were going to do it out there at the memorial park area by the cemetery, but obviously, that was not feasible. So graciously, the Pickway Chamber of Commerce and the city of Pickwa picked up the project and was very successful in getting the program started downtown. And we've gotten lots of great comments about how proud it is to have it in the city of Pickwa. The idea of developing downtown was that it gave people who are from out of town and also the citizens of Pickwa the opportunity to come out off, off of 75, come down Ash Street and see how we honor our, our veterans in the city of Pickwa. And a year and a half ago, we were at our peak. We had banners from the border, or from the corner of Spring Street and Water all the way to the end of town out Ash Street, to, to the city limits. And at that time, on Memorial Day and Fourth of July, we had the entire route, all, all the, the light poles with all the banners on them, and we had flags on them, and it looked fantastic for the city of Pickwa, something that we could all be proud of. Well, in the last year and a half, things have gone the other direction. If you drive out 36 now, there are 50 banners that are missing, and they've been missing since last year. And one of my questions is, is why have they not been replaced? I understand that's because they've been damaged through the wind or from the sun, changing the color of them, and they had to be taken, taken down and, and replaced or repaired. And, but it's been since last year, and I, and I wonder why have they not been replaced?